Good, how are you doing?
Suzie, how you doing?
And I'm ready, if you are.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, welcome everyone. Uh, it is now six thirty P M. We're gonna start the regular meeting of the Planning Zoning Commission tonight, uh, February the third, twenty twenty five. And we do have a quorum here tonight. Uh, you have myself, Derek Parks Chair, uh, to my left, uh, Michael Vice Chair. And to his left is Suzie, uh, Mendoza, she's a member also, and to my right, uh, I have Miss Karen, which is also a member. And with the city staff, we have Ben, which is Director of Development Services. Uh, on the consent agenda items tonight, uh, we just have one, and that's approving the minutes from January the sixth of twenty twenty five. Uh, Commissioners, did y'all have any questions or concerns regarding those minutes?
No question.
No.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it, uh, consent agenda item has been approved, uh, moving along to new business, which is number two on your handout. Uh, this is a public hearing and consider zoning change from, uh, R A E to Plan Development one eighty for reduced sides, for reduced side yard setback requirements on the sites identified as lot six and seven, block E of Hidden Creek Phase Three and addressed as three oh four and three oh one Whispering Way respectively, uh, City of Red Oak, Ellis County, Texas, case number Z as in zebra, C as in cat, two five dash zero one requested by Dwayne Bryant. Staff, please.
Uh, Commission, uh, this is a request. We had a request similar to this a few months ago. Uh, it is simply to reduce the side yard setbacks from twenty five feet to fifteen feet. And if it's okay with the Commission, the first three items are all, uh, of the same nature in the same neighborhood. So I'm just going to explain them all in one presentation, and then you can open and close, um, each one and vote on each one separately.
Okay.
Um, so like I said, the current R A E zoning district requires, um, it's straight zoning, so it requires twenty five foot setbacks. And, uh, instead of trying to reduce the zoning, uh, we just are going to request to change it to a P D so that all the other R A E standards will be followed with the exception of the side yard setbacks moving from twenty five feet down to fifteen feet. Uh, these are large lots, um, over a half acre. Um, and so a fifteen foot, uh, side yard setback is still, uh, pretty, pretty large for such big lots. The first two, uh, and, and the reason we had to do more than one request, even though they're all the same request is that they are not contiguous, so we can't, we can't just jump from lot to lot. So these, this first two are, are, uh, right next door to each other, so they can be in one request. Um, the applicant has provided, uh, site plans for the new homes. And they are, uh, single story, uh, which really spreads out the layout, so they're a lot, they're large homes, but, uh, a single story instead of two stories, so their footprint is quite wide, uh, which is a big part of the request. So that, uh, this is, uh, one of the, this is the lot on the east side here, and then the next is the one on the west. So again, you can just see it's a, a, a large footprint. Um, and they're needing to push it over to one side to get their side entry garages to have enough room to, to back out there. We did have one letter in opposition. I'll just, it has a lot of information. I'll, I'll just go ahead and read into the record. We hope the Council will prayerfully consider the zoning change request for plots linked to three twelve Whispering Way, Red Oak, Texas. We purchased, um, we purchased a almost acre lot here because we wanted to be on a bigger piece of land with more privacy and rules regarding how close you could build to the property lines and the rules of the H O A, which aren't being enforced either, which I discussed with Ms. Higgins, and have sent a letter to the people listed on the letter that collect money, but there is no H O A, no committee, no meetings. This should be illegal. Also, it's non-existent entity that just asks for annual dues. The letter to the H O A was regarding cars parking on the street, not allowed, as well as a small car full of cars at the opposite cul-de-sac. Man buys at auction instead of putting them behind his fence as required, and then house not even for sale, no resident weeds in flower beds as tall as me, and we're finally trimmed. It's a shame to pay for this, pay this kind of money. And once you commit that it would even be possible for anyone to legally change things like how close another house can be when it's the very reason you chose the neighborhood, it will obviously devalue our property more and more. People see how Dallas is building houses right beside each other, and you lose all your privacy. Please consider current homeowners who are locked into this. We were actually the first to complete our build and move in. Kind regards, Stephanie Johnson. While I'm not here to defend or agree with anyone, the, a fifteen foot side yard setback against a house that's got another fifteen foot side yard setback is, is thirty feet between homes. And then if any of the existing homes already had a twenty five foot setback, you'd have a forty foot setback between the existing, the existing home and the new home with a, with a five foot, so.
Okay.
Um, not that it's an unwarranted comment, but that's just something to consider. Uh, so that's all I have. Uh, applicant is here.
Okay. Thank you, man. This is a public hearing, so, uh, now the public hearing has, uh, been opened. Uh, those in favor of this item, you can come to the podium, please state your name and your address, and those who have any questions after this or, or against this item, you can go second. So if anyone here, uh, tonight that wants to speak on behalf of agenda item two, you have the floor.
How you doing, Council Dwayne Bryant, developer, Hidden Creek Three Estates? Um, as Mr. Ben stated, there is a big difference between having, as that residents stated, being just right next door to people. We have an excessive amount of privacy that would be forty feet actually from one area to another. Um, I don't wanna go against what they've kinda described in terms of the neighborhood itself, because that's something that I know personally. Uh, my wife and I, we both assure that everything in H O A is being adhered to. And we just wanna ensure that we're able to provide now with a couple of new buyers, uh, just a, a, a greater blueprint. Basically, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Anyone else? If no one else can have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Public hearing has been closed for agenda item two. Um, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the staff or the applicant here or?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Suzie.
So. Ben, can you show us on the map where, uh, the person who is in opposed is living? That's three twelve right here?
Yes.
Are the other lots that we're gonna consider adjacent to her as well? No? It's those two lots.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, if you can only have next to two people.
Next door, yeah, so for reference, I can take a quick measurement of how far appears her houses from the property line. So she looks like she's about forty-ish feet from the property line there. So then, based on the closest dimension. What, so thirty, so the house is thirty feet plus, so it's about s- in between sixty and seventy feet from her house, based on this map. And based on the measurement I just took there.
And the lot on the other side of her is a regular lot as it stands right now. Nobody's purchased it. There's no house built on it. Is that a setback request also?
No.
That's a regular one.
You said, so three eighteen, you've already sold to somebody, they just haven't built yet? Oh, okay.
Okay.
Submitting anything for permit, not, yeah, okay.
Okay. So it's one neighbor.
Uh, this is the only person, yes, that responded.
To the left of the house.
We didn't get any phone calls or anything, right? Just, just, just her.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a concern that if the people who bought the property were told that houses have to be twenty five feet away from the property line, and now I hear there's five lots that if we look at all these, there's gonna be asking for adjustment. And it's a small neighborhood, looks like thirty five, forty lots altogether. That seems like a big percentage for, I mean, it's not just one last one that they couldn't squeeze in. It's, this is a lot. So it concerns me.
It is.
So it's five today, and what we do last time, two?
Three.
Three.
Three, okay.
Ten, or, uh, I'm sorry.
Eight out of.
Eight out of forty.
How many, how many lots are left to sell?
In terms of buildable?
Mm-hmm.
Ten.
Okay.
So basically out of the thirty, that would be the only dispute. Express whatever you're doing, the Council, I would. I wouldn't wanna express anything negative in regards to my resident in charge of, there might be. I understand that they, now, can't have a dispute. You finish five, that's that's five separate.
I guess the discussion of the setback is not done.
H O A issues.
Right, uh, her letter included a lot of things that were not, uh, maybe pertaining to the zoning case, but she.
She's clearly bothered by that.
Right.
Okay. Commissioners, any other question?
No.
All right, and can I have a motion, please, for agenda item two?
I move to approve, uh, the reduced setbacks to fifteen feet as proposed, uh, to accommodate the wider footprint of a one-story home.
Second. All in favor? All right. Three, one, uh, agenda item two has been approved. Uh, agenda item three is, uh, conduct a public hearing. Uh, zoning change from R A E to Plan Development one eight one for reduced side setback. Your requirements on the site identified as lot ten, block E of Hidden Creek Phase Three and addressed as three two one Whispering Way, City of, uh, Red Oak, Ellis County, Texas. Case number Z as in zebra, C as in cat, two five dash zero two requested by Dwayne Bryant.
Uh, so I, I won't get into the whole thing again. It's the exact same, um, request, uh, for fifteen foot, so, uh, the fifteen foot is on the north side, which is adjacent to the pond here, uh, so that's not, uh, encroaching on any uh, home or anything, and then you've got the other lot that would be here, uh, it's got thirty feet from that, which is more than the, the standard requirement. And so that on the map looks like this, so here's the pond, here's the north side, so they've got the fifteen foot on this north side, and then, uh, their plan, their plot plan shows thirty feet from this lot here.
Okay, um, this also is a, a public hearing. Uh, those in favor of this item, you can go first. Those who had questions or concerns, they can go second. Um, the floor is open for agenda item three.
No.
Okay. If not, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, uh, public hearing has been closed for agenda item three. Uh, questions or concerns?
You said back to the note, doesn't affect anyone, because it's on the pond side.
Okay, and can I have a motion for agenda item three, please?
Uh, move to, uh, approve agenda item three as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it, uh, agenda item three has been approved. Uh, moving along to agenda item four, which is conduct a public hearing, zoning change, R A E to Plan Development one eight two for reduce side yard setback requirements on the sites identified as lot seven, block D of Hidden Creek Phase Three, addressed as four hundred Whispering Way, City of Red Oak, case number Z as in zebra, C as in cat, two five dash zero three requested by, uh, Dwayne Bryant. Steph?
Uh, so this is again the same, uh, request, uh, the lot this time is at the corner of Whispering Way and Valley Trail here, uh, so the side yard. Oops. So the request is to reduce the side yard that's adjacent to the street. And the side yard that's adjacent to a future home is gonna be thirty, almost thirty-two feet. So the reduced side is on the street side.
Okay.
Which is here. And then, uh, just for reference, the, the street is so the right away is sixty feet, whereas in most of your neighborhoods, it's gonna only be fifty, so it's, um, it's far less, I mean, it's, it's far greater to the actual like edge of the pavement versus a normal kinda subdivision, because this is a large lot subdivision with, uh, rooftop sections instead of curb and gutter.
Okay.
So it's closer to the, the property line that we see there, but then there's a bigger gap between the property line and the street already.
Right.
Then maybe.
Right. I don't know if you can kinda see down there or not. Nope, not yet. But it kind of, yeah. But, yeah.
All right, thank you, Steph. Uh, this is a, uh, public hearing. Uh, those in favor of this item, you can go first. Or if you have any questions, you can go second, and if you need to come to the podium, and, uh, please state your name and your address. And if not, uh, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Will we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, uh, public hearing has been closed. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Not at all? All right, and can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve agenda item three as presented. Agenda item four, I'm sorry.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it, agenda item four has been approved. Uh, moving along to agenda item five, which is conduct a public hearing and consider zoning change from R A E to Plan Development one eight three for a due side yard setback requirements on the sites identified as lot ten, block C of Hidden Creek Phase Three, uh, addressed as four one nine Whispering Way, City of Red Oak, Ellis County, Texas. Case number Z as in zebra, C as in cat, uh, two five dash zero four requested by Dwayne Bryant. Uh, staff again, please.
Uh, this is, uh, again, the same request. Um, Ashley, remind me, is this next door to the other ones we did? No, okay. Okay. Again, the side yard setback is being reduced on this side. Uh, they're actually filling up the whole lot. This is a, a narrower and much deeper lot than the others. Um, so the house is taking up, uh, essentially the entire buildable area, so they're going fifteen foot to, to fifteen foot line essentially on this one.
Okay.
But again, any house that gets built, uh, on either side would, the, they'll have the twenty five foot, or even if they come in and ask for a fifteen foot, they'd still have thirty feet between the homes.
Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, those in favor of this item, you can come to the podium. Or those maybe against this item, you can come to the podium, please, and if you come to the podium, please state your name and your address. All right, we didn't have anyone, uh, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
The move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. The, uh, public hearing has been closed. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns? We're going to agenda item five. Questions? All right, and can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve agenda my, agenda item number five as proposed.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item five has been approved, uh, three, one. Um, moving along to agenda item six is another public hearing, uh, conduct a public hearing and consider zoning change from Plan Development four one R four, uh, P D four one R four to Plan Development four one R five for the development of an accessory drone delivery use on the property described as lot one, block A of Walmart, uh, Red Oak Edition and addressed as one hundred Ryan Drive, City of Red Oak, Texas. Case number Z as in zebra, C as in cat, two four dash two six requested by Kim Lee Owen. Staff, please.
So I don't know if you guys have seen in other communities that, uh, Walmart is doing drone deliveries, uh, within the community, within a certain radius. Um, they have requested, uh, or it's actually a third-party company is requesting to, um, operate out of the Walmart. Uh, I guess they're, they're partners, I don't know the exact, uh, business relationship, they're, they're kind of a third-party vendor for Walmart. Um, but, uh, Walmart is in a P D already, um, and so changing their site plan, uh, and allowing uses that aren't in our code is, uh, we, we've gotta do a zoning change for them. Um, so with this being kind of what we can all assume, the kinda future of, of the way things are gonna go, um, it's, I think, pretty cool that we're gonna get to experience here in Red Oak, but, um, just from a zoning perspective, we didn't have a definition, so we've, we've got a definition now and then a, a site plan for where it's gonna go, so if you'll, um, if, if you know kinda Walmart's layout, they've got the pharmacy, uh, kinda over here on this side, and then uh, this grassed area here is where they're proposing to, um, put the, uh, the stations for the for the drone units. Um, some of the concerns that staff originally had was, you know, um, employees walking across the driveway, um, kinda how was it gonna look? Um, which is kinda how we ended up here. One of, one of the initial, uh, uh, proposals was that they were gonna put it in the parking lot. Um, and just take up a few parking spaces, and when, uh, staff suggested, uh, not doing that, this is, uh, they came back later and, and, uh, proposed this area, so it'll be fenced. It'll have some landscape around it to try to hide it as best as possible. Um, but it does have a, a vertical component to it that won't necessarily be hidden. Um, this is kind of a a, uh, rendering of what was done in a different municipality. Um, I'll let them explain more, but these are kinda like baskets, I guess, and the drone comes in and enters the basket for charging and all of that. Um, so it is a vertical structure, which is why we wanted some fencing and landscaping around it. It'll have a black wrought iron fence around the, uh, around the site, and then as well as landscaping along the edges here. But I will let them, I'm sure you have questions, but I will let them kinda answer any of those I wanna speak. I had a turn on that.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Um, this is a public hearing, and those who are in favor of this item, uh, you can come to the podium and please state your name and your address. And those who may have questions or concerns, you can go second, so the public hearing is open, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Ryan Trimble here on behalf of Walmart. Thank you so much for the opportunity to join you. Um, this is an exciting time for Walmart. Uh, it's futuristic, really cool, really fun stuff. But, you know, being a part of the Red Oak community is something we, uh, take very seriously. Uh, on that note, I wanted to introduce our fabulous store manager, Neil Vaz. Um, Neil has been at our store, he, he's been in the D F W area for about fifteen years. He's, uh, been in the store here in Red Oak for about a year, hit the ground running, um, has, uh, been helping out the school district, the local fire department, and so he's really engaged. We also have one of his outstanding, uh, team leads here, his digital coach, uh, Coach Raj is here with us today too. Um, so thank you both for being here. Uh, if you have any questions about the store, we can, um, talk about that in a bit. But, um, you know, along with two great store leaders, i- it's really exciting because Wal- Red Oak's been chosen by Walmart as uh, a location to have this exclusive experience, uh, for drones. Um, you may be asking, well, why is drone delivery so important? Um, to answer that question, I gotta tell you about Girl Scout cookies. So I've got an eight-year-old, a new Brownie this year, she moved up from Daisy to Brownie, and, uh, we were out selling cookies, and you have to buy the cookies beforehand, so we have a whole, uh, dining room, four hundred boxes of Girl Scout cookies. And so we're walking around yesterday, and my wife told her, you know, when I was a Girl Scout, we had to go and sell the cookies and then wait five weeks, five or six weeks to get them, and then go deliver them. And it was a really nice nostalgic moment until my daughter said, why would anybody wait five weeks for cookies? And so, you know, I think that really speaks to the fact of, you know, the mentality around how people are shopping and the trends. Uh, I know it's an eight-year-old, but I think it's, you know, everybody is expecting things, um, uh, you know, on demand, and I think a lot of customers aren't, uh, are starting to not be willing to wait even thirty minutes for delivery. And so I think it's a trend that we saw coming out of the pandemic, but, you know, there's a lot of things that have forced companies to adapt. And so we're excited to try to provide that service here in Red Oak. Um, you know, just Neil was telling me, just, uh, since October, he's seen his regular delivery trends up twenty percent, over twenty percent in his store, and, uh, seems to be growing, um, you know, uh, every month. Um, so it's, that's one of the many reasons we chose, uh, Red Oak as a location for expanding our drone delivery, but we also think it's gonna enhance the quality of life here. Um, if you think about, you know, if y'all have kiddos, I know for, you know, for me, I had that sheer terror when, you know, you're between diaper changes and you're out of diaper cream, and you're like, man, I'm so tired, I don't wanna go to the store. I- if I had had drone delivery, man, I could've dropped some, you know, some ointment, some diapers, right on the, you know, in the front or backyard, and, um, you know, it would've been great, or, you know, my mom was Or, you know, my mom was recently sick, I would have had the opportunity to, you know, drop a, you know, some Advil to her or something like that right there, so she wouldn't have to get up and get out. So, um, I think there's a lot of really cool use cases for it. I think we're getting a lot of great feedback from, uh, you know, from our stores and from our drone partner ZipLine. So, um, I'll pause there and I'll let Juan come up and, and say a few words. But again, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and look forward to answering any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Juan Moreira. Uh, my address is one zero one zero one, where you place, San Antonio, Texas. Uh, Ben did a great job of kind of talking about our site plan here. Main highlights I wanted to hit is that in the landscape area that we did end up putting the, the nine charging stations and one loading station. We also have one loading station next to the expansion that was, uh, recently added to the store. Uh, we did avoid any existing easements. We also are avoiding, um, any existing utilities. There is no proposed utilities going to the, um, stations other than electrical being ran from the store itself. Uh, we, as Ben mentioned, we will be adding landscape and eight-foot fence around those towers. Uh, poor rod is a, is a, um, a easy site plan. If you have any, um, questions when it comes to the actual site plan itself, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, if not, I know a lot of questions are for ZipLine himself to answer by drones and I'll pass it on to, uh, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Cook and I'm with ZipLine Drone Delivery, um, three 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 Cory Way, San Francisco, uh, C A nine four oh eight oh. Um, so yeah, I, I think we may have shared some slides. I don't know if those came through or not. If not, happy to just answer any questions, um, that may have come up.
Okay. No slides. No slide to hit you at it.
There's some visuals that can help kind of show a little bit about what the technology looks like, but, um, if not, I'll do my best to describe it. I do, yeah. Just look it up. Great, let's do that. Okay. So I'll talk through a little bit about technology, maybe before I start ZipLine. Um, we are the largest drone delivery company in the world. Uh, to date, we've done more than one point two million commercial drone deliveries. Uh, we like to say somewhere around the world, every day, somebody is receiving a delivery once a minute. Uh, so we're really proud of that. We've flown over ninety million autonomous miles safely. Um, our background is kind of in saving lives. We started in Rwanda doing deliveries in two thousand and sixteen. Um, and at that time, we were solving some really tough logistical challenges. Uh, the issue there was women who were losing their lives every day after giving birth because of lack of access to blood. Um, so ZipLine set out to solve that problem, um, and had a tremendous impact. Uh, a recent study by the Wharton showed that we were able to reduce women's in hospital deaths after giving birth by more than fifty-one percent. Um, and so that's something we're really proud of and we, we use that success to kind of expand into different markets across Africa. Uh, we now have expanded both in volume and geographically. Uh, Walmart is obviously our anchor partner. Um, and today we can deliver anything from grocery items to retail products to kind of dinner for the whole family. Um, so we have a pilot going right now in Arkansas Pe ridge, um, and we're coming to D F W to launch at scale. Uh, ZipLine is headquartered in California, uh, but we are opening a hub here very soon, actually in D F W, where we'll be doing most of our uh, kind of maintenance and customer support. Um, we have about thirteen hundred employees and, uh, yeah, really excited to be partnering with Walmart, um, on this project. So I know we met with Ben and some of the other planning staff, but yeah, really wanted to answer any questions today and kind of give you an idea of what the technology looks like. So, uh, maybe I'll show this video from A to Z and then I can kind of give a couple more specifications and answer any questions, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I think this will give you a good idea of kind of what it looks like. Um, so a customer would place an order, um, and then this, the, the droid is kind of the smaller, uh, uh, the smaller robot, if you want, that it takes the package inside. Uh, the zip is the larger drone, that's the droid. The larger zip goes up to about three hundred feet altitude, as you can kind of see in this footage, and it stays at three hundred feet at all times. And it will lower the droid on a winch and inside the droid is the package, uh, which will get dropped off at the customer's location. So the droid is actually hyper-precise. Um, it can deliver within a three-foot radius and, um, both the zip and the droid are equipped with Flight R Q, which are, is our um, perception and sensor suite that's able to autonomously detect if there's obstacles in the way, um, and make sure that it's not delivering um, in anywhere that's, any location that isn't safe. So that's kind of what the platform looks like. Uh, the droid will then go back up into the zip and the zip stays at that three hundred feet and returns to the Walmart location. Let me see if there's any more. Show that. Um, so yeah, uh, the droid, it, it's about the size of a small cooler. Um, it can fit, uh, about twenty-four donuts, uh, or twelve eight-inch sandwiches. Uh, it's insulated, so it can keep hot products hot, cold products cold, um, or it can fit eight pounds of beef brisket. That's enough for a good barbecue. Um, but yeah, truly what, what I think what we're really excited about is the ability to, with Walmart, uh, be able to deliver items in under thirty minutes from A to B, um, and, uh, be able to do that really quickly and efficiently. It gets cars off the road. Um, we're excited for kind of, as Ryan mentioned, some of the accessibility use cases, uh, folks who might have elderly parents, um, or those who might not have, have access to a car. Um, and truly, we just don't believe that in this day and age, it makes sense to have a four-ton vehicle, uh, essentially a private taxi for our rotisserie chickens. And we think it makes more sense to have it in, uh, in an electric, fully autonomous, uh, vehicle. So a, maybe a couple more specs on it. Um, the, uh, zip is about ten times faster than a car. Um, and we initially will be launching with likely a two-mile radius, but we'll expand that up to a ten-mile radius, um, at full service. Um, and we work very closely with the F A for all of our approvals. Um, they review all of our safety procedures and we work very closely with them almost on a day-to-day basis. Um, so that's kind of a little bit about ZipLine and it's, and it's, um, and kind of what the technology looks like. Um, maybe before I move forwards, are there any questions on the technology? I don't know if this is a back and forth or if I should just keep talking.
Yeah, I know, we probably have a few questions, but, um, yeah, you can, you can wait, we can wait to the end after everyone, uh, gives their information, explanation, so.
Okay. Um, let me see, what else could I share without my slides? Um, uh, a few things perhaps on, I'd say the three concerns that we mainly get that I'll just address upfront. And then if y'all have more questions, I can certainly answer them. Typically, it's on sound, safety and privacy. Um, so starting with sound, are, we've had engineers who have worked for many years on designing a system that can kind of blend into the background of everyday lives. So you kind of sold the two-part system, the fact that it's the larger zip that stays up in the sky and then the smaller droid that comes down to make the delivery. That's so that the larger, kind of louder zip is further away. Um, in addition, we have optimized the sound of our propellers to resemble more of a fan, if you want. Um, so not only the sound intensity we've worked on, but also the sound profile. Um, and then finally, we also randomize our flight patterns. So that means that we're not repeatedly exposing the same residences to the same sound exposure. Uh, all of that to say that whether we're delivering, um, which is at three hundred feet or whether we're redocking at a Walmart at about a hundred feet from where the docks are located, um, our decibels are somewhere between fifty-three to sixty-four decibels. Um, and normally I have a chart to show y'all, but that pretty much puts us between the sound of a dishwasher in the room next door and a car that's driving past. So it truly is designed so that you, you really almost barely notice it. Um, and then in terms of safety, I mentioned we've flown ninety million autonomous miles safely. That's because we have critical redundant systems. So if one part of, uh, the system would fail, there's another one to kind of back it up. Um, we also have ranches all over the U S. We're testing in Wyoming right now. You can imagine it's quite cold there, so we're testing kind of on really the fringes and the limits of what the system can handle. Um, and then finally, I mentioned before, we have Flight I Q and that is our autonomy and perception suite. And we really understand that if we want the system to scale, people have to be comfortable receiving it in their own backyards. And so that's, that's why privacy is really at the core of what we do. Um, are similar to kind of how cars have backup sensors, our zips and droids have Flight I Q and that's truly just to be able to understand the environment that we fly and deliver in. So it's there designed to detect obstacles and make sure that we can deliver safely. Um, we also blur our faces, we follow industry standards, um, for those privacy, um, items. And so we can't zoom in, um, we can't read license plates or things of that nature. Um, so I think that's a little bit about privacy and maybe I'll end with community engagement. Uh, that, that's something that's really core to what we do. Before any of this gets installed at a Walmart, we want to make sure that the community is aware of it. Um, I think as, as everybody knows, that if people are not aware of what's happening or educated or feel like they're surprised, um, you can often have negative reactions. And so we really want to make sure that we're both, uh, presenting to communities upfront, but also reaching out to HOAs, local schools, churches, um, really any communities that are local to make sure that they know drone delivery is coming. We're really excited about it and also answer any questions that they might have. Um, and so, yeah, to date, we do a lot of engagement also in STEM. Really inspired, excited to kind of inspire the next generation, um, of people who might be interested in pursuing careers in technology. So we've got a whole team that really focuses on that and we work very closely with Walmart and, uh, we'll work closely with y'all as well as we get closer to launching. So, um, that's a lot of talking and a lot of information, but, um, yeah, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Um, anyone else? Questions or concerns? Uh, if not, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, uh, the public hearing has been closed. Um, commissioners, co- questions, please?
What are the markets are you already in?
The market's where we're already in. Um, so as I mentioned, we've got the pilot in Arkansas Pe ridge with Walmart. And then our next step here is to launch, uh, with multiple stores with Walmart across D F W. Um, so we currently, I can say it because it's very much visible, we've got a store in construction in Mesquite. Um, but mainly we're focusing, D F W is the metro where we're focusing to launch at scale. And then we've got a couple of other metros that we've announced, um, but D F W is very much where we're focused right now.
And obviously it's beyond line of sight pilots. Where, where are the pilots? Will they be at that location somewhere else?
Yep. So we are gonna have, um, we've got a remote, we're gonna have RP, we'll, we'll have essentially, we've got a, what we call our remote, R O C C, uh, Remote Operation Control Center, and that is based in North Carolina. So we'll have, essentially the system is twenty-four seven monitored. So at all times, the system will be, will be, um, remote operated, if you want. Um, yeah.
What kind of recoveries do you all do? How, how would y'all accomplish recovery, say one?
Yeah, so the system does have a parachute. So if in the very worst case, um, where one of the, if there are multiple critical redundancies were to fail in that like unlikely event, um, there is a parachute that would deploy and that allows the zip to land safely. We would immediately be notified and be the first on scene. Um, and in addition, kind of in terms of the community outreach that we do, we also coordinate with the fire department, police department, um, to make sure that everybody's educated regarding our first, uh, our first responders emergency plan. Um, so we've got a plan in place, we'll educate folks as to kind of how to respond, but really we plan on kind of being the first to know and the first to get there and, and respond.
You were pretty firm on the three hundred feet. Uh, do you all have to have a radar anywhere on the building? How does that work?
Um, in terms, we, we won't, in terms of, uh, measuring the three hundred feet or?
No, for, uh, tracking your, your planes, your drones.
Yeah, so they're, they're gonna be autonomously managed as part of a fleet system. So we don't need to have, each of them will have, they'll be able to kind of connect to a, um, a global system that we'll be managing. So we don't, we won't have to have a radar on the building.
What's the accuracy of delivery? Cause I'll just be totally real.
Yeah.
I get my neighbors' deliveries nine times out of ten and the tenth time, my other neighbor on the other side of them gets the delivery. It never goes to her house. So where, where are you delivering that?
Yeah.
Are you delivering it on the sidewalk in front of the house? Are you delivering it to the side door of the garage? What's, what's happening and how accurate is that?
Yeah, great question. Um, and that's definitely something I've experienced as well, which is frustrating. Um, so there's two things that are, that are really great about our system. One, it's, it is hyper-precise, so it can actually deliver within a three-foot radius and you as the customer would pick that location. So you would say, for example, you could have it delivered in your backyard, um, within it, like pretty much on a coffee table if you wanted, um, or in your front yard. The other thing that's, because it's so precise and the delivery is so quick, you would have, um, a kind of a live updates on, um, on your phone, you'd be able to track when the delivery is coming. So on top of that, you would know exactly to the minute, you know, it's not like a four to six-hour window. It would be, it's arriving in three seconds. Um, so that's another benefit of the system.
And you said you can have it delivered front yard or backyard?
Yep.
You can kind of let the, I guess, the system know where you actually wanted it?
Exactly. Before you place the order, you could select the location. Yep.
And you couldn't change that, right? So if I say I wanted it front, then I was something like, no, I want it in my backyard.
I think probably, I, I'm not actually sure about that. I would imagine mid-delivery, it might be challenging, but I'm sure from one delivery to the next, that's probably something you could customize, I would imagine.
And what about the delivery times? Is there like a cutoff?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to speak to the.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, uh, we're, you know, it's, it's, uh, we're trying to gather the best data. I'd say it's nine to five, nine to six right now is kind of the target, um, timeframe for it. But, um, I think that, uh, you know, the daylight hours is probably what we're looking at, uh, right now. With opportunities to grow that, obviously, but right, for right now, I think I'd say daylight hours, but, you know, nine to five, nine to six.
Okay. And did y'all say this is already up and running at a store in Texas or y'all, this is just something new that Walmart is doing in the Dallas?
Uh, you know, it's, um, w- we're, uh, really focused on launching this service across D F W, uh, so we can launch it at scale and see how people react here in the Dallas market. Um, we do have a ZipLine, uh, some ZipLine towers that are in one of our, one of our stores in Mesquite. Um, and be happy to have you all out to come see it if you'd like, um, s- see how, you know, how the drones work and how everything interacts. Um, we do have several more stores that we're working with Stephanie or her team on, uh, kind of all across Collin, Dallas, Ellis County, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Form of drones out there also. This, this is one format of. Right. More of a fireside compared to the other drones that are out there right now. And one of the max had to be so that you can both hear two eight four, uh, which is the traditional drone, still loud enough. That's the one you might now, they're testing it out. The different test that you have tried, see which one is more effective and more convenient for the customers.
Yeah, uh, to, to that point, we're working pretty much exclusively with two partners now. Uh, there, there's a third one that we've, um, been working with and it's operational. It's a little bit of a different, um, model, but I'd say the, uh, uh, ZipLine and there's another vendor that we've, that we're, we've partnered with on some other stores as well. Their model's a little bit different, but I think the ZipLine model is, is really highly effective, so, yeah.
Is there a weight limit? I know y'all probably mentioned it, is there a weight limit with the ZipLine?
So in terms of the, the load, the package load, we can carry up to eight pounds. Uh, initially at launch, we anticipate it might be a little bit less and then we'll likely expand that as we work with the F A to get all of our approvals. But it has the capacity to carry up to eight pounds.
Okay. I was thinking if you order something online, does it, does it tell you like, okay, you're at eight pounds, you can't do the zip?
Yeah, so there's definitely, there's a lot of experts much smarter than me working on integrating that system to make sure exactly that when you place an order through Walmart, there's obviously the weight limitation, but also the size, the volume limitation, if you want. Um, so there's a lot of work with our software teams and their software teams, making sure that we integrate and can actually deliver the items um, and make sure that they're, that they're complying with both the weight and the volume limits. Yeah.
So on the, uh, fifty-three to sixty-four decibel?
Yep.
Is that measured at three hundred feet or is that measured at another decibel?
Good question. So, um, and I'm, the, the fifty-three, shoot, I, I wish I had the, the fifty-three to sixty-four is within, uh, that range, uh, is within, for a delivery at three hundred feet. And then also for, if you were standing a hundred foot from a dock at a Walmart location. And the hundred foot, I mean, typically what we've seen with cities is it's typically a hundred and fifty feet, but we wanted to show a hundred feet because we feel that we can, well, our sound is so good that we can kind of be almost closer, if you want to, um, to property limits, yeah.
You said any, any type of weather, these zip, if it's cold, if it's, if it's thunderstorm raining?
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
Still coming.
It, it is still coming. Um, there definitely some, if the, the weather gets too extreme, um, we have, as I said, the remote, the R O C C, our Remote Operational Control Center, who will review and make a determination. Um, I know the weather gets real crazy out here, but we can fly in heavy rain, strong winds, um, snow, snowy, kind of cold, very cold conditions. Um, it'll just be a case of, you know, if it does get too extreme, our, our, um, remote team would make that decision.
In the property to the north of the Walmart, that's not Red Oak's, is it?
No.
That's all the questions I have. So, uh, you have the wrought iron fence, that's the design that's around and staff is okay with that?
Yeah.
So they have on the opposite side of the building, they have the garden area and they have a pseudo wrought iron fence around that. But it's got, uh, masonry corners and macery spacing in between. It seems like it, it might look better for the area if it kind of matched.
Like this, just masonry with the wrought iron in between.
I got it.
It's not showing on the.
Oh, sorry, Greg. Can you put that up on the screen?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking at.
Okay. Okay. So that would just, uh, if, if that's, uh, what the commission would like, then, uh, I would just make a motion to include the matching in the, in the, uh, in your, uh, recommendation to council.
And also too, I'm, I'm sorry, for the, for the record, we did receive, uh, uh, some letters of from the, uh, uh, public. Uh, one is from Doyle Elmore at one oh six, I believe that is Sun Glow Loop in Red Oak. Um, that person is, uh, for this agenda item six. There's another one from Betty Franks, uh, one oh nine Sun Glow Loop, uh, Red Oak, Texas. Um, she is for this item also. And a third one was from, uh, Joey Elmore. I guess he's the, I believe he's a HLA president, I believe, or treasurer. Um, another letter from that individual. I guess he's speaking for the HLA, um, there for this item also. Um, Commissioners, did y'all have any other questions or concerns? All right. And can I have a motion for agenda item six, please?
Make a motion to approve agenda item six, uh, adding recommendations to the council that the wrought iron fencing also had these masonry anchors as, or on the other end of the building at Walmart.
So you want to match the other end pretty much. Okay.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it. Uh, agenda item, uh, six has been approved, uh, with the added comments. And, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
No, second.
All in favor? Aye. Eyes have, um, Red Oak, planning zone commission meeting has been adjourned. Thank you all.